Mrs. Capellini?
Here.
Mr. Fry?
Here.
Mr. Hanum?
Here, with a background of Miami University behind me.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Ms. Stowe?
Here.
Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
All seven members of City Council are present, therefore a quorum does exist. I don't see that we've had anybody join the City Council meeting via Zoom. Is that accurate, Bill? Or Chuck?
Yes, Mayor, there's no one here present other than Bill and I.
All right. With that, Agenda Item Two is the Pledge of Allegiance. This meeting to be led by Mr. McCann.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are up to additions to the agenda. I have no items to add to the agenda. Mrs. Westfall?
Nothing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Numbers of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hanum?
Yes, I'd like to add a discussion of a couple of zoning issues that have been brought to my attention that we need to, and to schedule a zoning meeting, and we can do that at the end.
Let's do that at 19:00. We'll do it as Committee Reports 19A, Schedule Zoning Committee. Anybody else? Apparently does not. You have anything to add, Mr. Sanford?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
I see, I don't see Toby on the meeting. I do see Chief Snore. Anything to add, Chief?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Or Mr. Aller?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Or Mrs. Brining?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
All right. With that, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
No, move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and tonight's agenda is approved as amended. Agenda Item Four is approver of the meeting minutes from our last regular meeting on December 7th. Mrs. Westfall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the meeting minutes from Sylvania City Council meeting held on December 7th, 2020, as submitted.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes from December 7th as...
Opposed?
Motion carries, and those meeting minutes are approved. We're up to Agenda Item Five, which is a COVID-19 update. I want to do a few things with this. First, an update on city employees and city facilities. We have been quite fortunate, and I'm knocking on the wood of my table here, not to have the virus brought into City Hall or brought into our city facilities. We have had a few employees whose spouses or family members have been tested, and a few have been positive. But we currently, as of this morning, to the best of my knowledge, have no city employees out or with the virus. We also locked City Hall a couple of weeks ago, and that seems to be working fine. We are not getting any comments that we're not accessible. It is simply locked from walk-in people. If they call and make an appointment, they can come in, and that seems to be working just fine. I would like to, we are continuing to work with Lucas County. I'm on weekly meetings with the other mayors and other elected officials, and people are joining those meetings because they are quite useful. We continue to get updates about what going on in Lucas County, and now, right on the top is what we can do to help with the vaccine distribution. There is also a committee, it's called the COVID-B Committee, that's been established for the vaccine distribution. There will be a press conference about that tomorrow. It involves, I believe, every mayor in the area, the presidents of the hospitals, and a number of the presidents or higher offices. People to be receptive to receiving the vaccine when it becomes available. You're probably going to hear about it in the media. If they're just getting started on it, that is the message out there right now, but we are not going to have a lot of vaccine for most of the public, including me and you and most people other than first-line defenders, for some time. I did not put this in your council packets this time. I can tell you that 43560 has moved out of the top spot. We are now at 497 confirmed cases over the past three weeks. 43615 is leading at 554. 43614 is at 513. Then it drops off to 43613 at 460. Mr. Fry, they are not at the county taking advantage of your algorithm to divide this into how many cases per capita. But if you recall, Mr. Fry's number showed 43560 is one of the higher resident ZIP codes, and we are indeed one of the higher cases, but we're not out of line like we were maybe a month ago or so. So that is good news. I don't know if any members of staff or any members of City Council want to have a discussion about current COVID issues at the moment. We are open to your questions. Mr. Aller or Chief Snore would be happy to address them.
Mr. Mayor, you said that will the city actually play some role in the in the vaccination process?
I don't believe so. What they are trying to do is to garner support among community leaders to encourage people to be open to taking the vaccine. You've seen other statewide or national leaders in the media taking it. They've started out with the idea of having corporate challenges among the big corporations in the area, saying, "Well, we had 60% of our people take it." "No, we had 75," that sort of competition. That's probably the best idea I've heard so far. They've also solicited prizes for getting people in to do it. Somebody had the idea during the first meeting that you shouldn't, restaurant owners shouldn't let people into their restaurant until they've been vaccinated, and that got shot down very quickly by the Mancy family, saying, "We're dying as it is. We're not going to tell people they can't come in." So they are working their way through different scenarios. But again, the vaccine's not there for everybody to take anyways.
Well, Mr. Mayor, in the event that you want to have a public, public official's vaccination, I'd be more than happy to participate.
I feel the same way. We've had a few other elected and non-elected officials on the call volunteering to step to the front of the line just as soon as it doesn't look inappropriate, is what the words have been used. All of them in our ad, Doug. So...
We want to be around.
That's right. We've not heard anything about a schedule. Right now, there was a question on the governor's about when more senior people than us might be vaccinated. He talked about people 75 and older being in Group Two. And I've already gotten a question to me is, "Well, I'm 85 and I live at home." That's why. So they're working through all these issues, but they will be solved with greater vaccine availability.
Mr. Mayor, just as a quick point, if if there is anything that people in their 30s can do to help bolster confidence, please let us know. I know we're going to be at the very end of the line getting the vaccine, as it should be, but if there's anything I can do to help, just let me know.
Thank you. I think many of us are fortunate not to have those underlying conditions that would push us further forward in line. So that's good. Chief, what's the latest on the vaccinations for our officers?
At this point, Mayor, we are waiting for a further update from Lucas County. The last information that we received last week was that vaccinations will occur for first responders in Lucas County starting sometime this week, but as of today, we have got no update on that.
All right. Thank you. All right, I think I've told you any special information I might know, and I'm ready to move on. If you are, to Agenda Item Six, which would be Mrs. Westfall giving an update of the public hearing that you all just witnessed. Mrs. Westfall? You need to unmute.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yes, there was a public hearing tonight at 6:30 held via Zoom, and the topic was SUP-1-2020, the Midwest Shooting Center, with the requested location of 7600 West Sylvania Avenue, Sylvania, Ohio. And again, this was a public hearing, so it was really primarily focused on comments from the public. We had high interest. It looked, we needed to complete this via Zoom. There looked to be about 75 participants, from what I could see. We had six people speak for it, and about a little over 20 people, 2021, speak against it. Some of the people who were for it were for it because of, you know, support for taxes, because it's helpful to have a place for people to learn how to use their guns, because they are familiar with shooting ranges and see no risk to the community. Felt that they, some people may not understand the realities of the shooting range, and that in fact there are not the risks that people tend to think. The people who spoke against it tended to lean toward concerns for their property values, concerns about the proximity to schools, churches, and other businesses. And there also were several who voiced concern about just the location. They actually supported the concept, but felt that it should be more in an industrial area or in a more remote area of the community. But there was no action taken in the public hearing, and it is something that will need discussion at some future point among council members, and likely the January 4th meeting.
I emailed to you all earlier today with sections of the ordinances and which make it clear that we have the ability to impose conditions along with the special use permit, and I unilaterally volunteered to Leslie to work with her that the special, whatever special use legislation comes before specifies that the special use would be conditional upon the the operators' representations to us as to how they're going to operate. So for example, we're not just going to give a special use for a, for a, we would not consider special use for just a gun range, but a special use for a gun range with the characteristics that Midwest Shooting Center have represented that they will go forward with, so that we have confidence that much like a plan, a development, we will have confidence that they will do what they have represented they will do, and nothing more. And that, and that that's what we will consider for, as, as the legislation. I think that's important. I think that's even, I think all of us, if we choose, if we decide to support this special use, we want to support it on the condition that it is the special use that they've represent. The nature of it, what they're going to do will be what they're going to do. And if they do something else, they will not have the special use. I think the issue that I'm not entirely comfortable with, but, and I'd like to have further discussion among council members about this, is I think one of the things that gives us confidence, one of the things that brings a degree of confidence in what they're proposing to do is who these people are, who these operators are, and would it be appropriate, if we decide to go forward, be appropriate as a condition operators? An opportunity, view those and be operating it. In other words, let's say five years from now, Midwest Shooting Center decides to sell out to Amazon Shooting Center. At that point, do we want, as a council, to have an opportunity to review who those people will be who will be operating the facility? My inclination would be to include an operator limitation on this, but I am not wed to that. And I would be very, I'd be very interested. I think this is a wise group. Certainly, that sort of a limitation would limit the transferability of the facility. It would probably limit the economic value of the special use permit. But I think it's something that might be of interest to our neighbors and, and to future councils. So I would like you to think about that, and if you have a thought about that over the coming days, I'd appreciate you sharing that with Leslie, who's...
I don't, I think that's a, I think that's a solid idea, no different than a liquor use permit. Same concept. When we go and ask for somebody, we do some research and homework, and those are much, obviously relatively common for us. We see four or five of them a year, maybe. The other thing, I spoke with Mr. Sabo this afternoon at some length, and one of my questions to him was the limitation on the type of weapons or caliber of weapons that could be utilized. And there, and he commented to me that he was interested in potentially creating limitations in that regard as well. So that may be something else that could be crafted into the special use permit and, and work through that process for our consideration over the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I think there's no doubt that we, if we decide to move forward with this, all those concerns that we heard from commentators tonight, we want to make sure, I think we want to do our best to address those logically and you know, we want to make sure that we want, you know, I moved by the comments about fear of safety for children. You know, we, we can't eliminate fear. Fear is, you know, fear is something that is that you can't eliminate, but we can, as intellectual regulators and as elected officials, we can do what we can to make sure that this facility is safe and operated safely and try...
Some very good ideas there, and might be something to consider in more depth in a zoning committee meeting. Would you want to have this moved to zoning? Do you feel that need?
I don't, I don't feel a need to move it to zoning. I'd like to I've worked, I'm, I'm a good lackey for Leslie, and I'm very comfortable
Okay, that's great.
Working for Leslie and giving her some, some of my thoughts, and I'd be, and I welcome all of your thoughts, you know.
As of right now, we will place this on your agenda for the January 4th meeting. You don't need to take any action tonight. You don't need to refer to a committee unless indeed somebody wants it in their committee, but we will put it on the agenda for your further investigation and reporting and discussion on January the 4th. Leslie, any guidance on a timeline where we really should be taking action on this?
The code just requires that we act within, the City Council act within a reasonable time after the Plan Commission recommendation. So we've, we've got some time for sure, and Mr. Hanum and I exchanged emails this afternoon, and I will do some research on the operator limitation for the special use permit and work on that legislation and get it out to everybody.
I guess one of the, one of the things that I hope from talking to Mr. Sabo is that they have some contractual limitations, and they may be able to extend those. But they would really prefer, I think, that we act on this in early January if we can. If we can't, we can't, you know, and we'll do what we have to do, but if for us to act on the 4th, that would be, he has a due diligence expires in the middle of the month. So that if he, he either has to go to his he needs to modify his contract, as I understand it, or or abandon it if he can't resolve this by mid-month. So if we can up or down, if we can vote, if we know the, if we could do this up or down by the, you know, at that January 4th meeting, I think that would be ideal. It may not be possible. If it's not possible, you know, we'll just tell him that he needs to deal with that, but...
To do that, Leslie will need to be able to prepare. I can authorize that, or you can. I believe five votes to pay January the 4th, because beyond, or if it's only four, it will take three readings of it then, or three votes on it. We are in the new charter requirement starting January 1st. But if indeed you have specialized items you want to place into this proposed legislation two weeks from tonight, you need to be sharing that. All of you need to be sharing that with the law director and give her a chance to respond to it and research it. I don't think she's going to want to come in January 4th and be typing during the meeting legislation that way.
Absolutely not, and I think the most of the limitation, most of the conditions that I'm thinking of that we want, that we would want to include are in the, we're in the presentation that we saw tonight from Midwest Shooting Center. You know, as they listed all the characteristics issues, the construction issue, we want to include. And they, then, they have to construct the facility in accordance with their representations in the original special use application. So I think I think it's, I think, I think the material has all been before us. I think frankly, our, you know, the way I've evaluated this is based on the representations that have, that are documented by Midwest Shooting Center. And if we can incorporate those into legislation, I think we can come up with something that will assure our neighbors to the greatest extent possible that this is going to be a safe and well-run operation. And if, and I also think we probably have enough information. I hope we will, we have enough information at this point to know whether we each individually could support this or not going forward. And it's, so we'll try and do some I'm committed to doing some work with Leslie on this, and unfortunately, Leslie, I hope you're not taking all of next week off, but...
No, I'll be here all week.
So, and, you know, being a senior partner in a white stocking law firm, not much happens next week, so I'll have plenty of time to help you with this.
You have plenty of time for your lackey work? Is that what you're...
Yeah, I'm pretty good at that, you know.
Okay.
Before you get to be a partner, you get to be an associate for a long time, and so I understand all of that.
All right. Leslie, you have your work cut out for you.
Sounds good.
Comments from any other councilmen before we move on to Agenda Item Seven? All right, let's move on to Agenda Item Seven, which is Brent Road waterline work. Mr. Aller? Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this waterline uh, was the waterline that council approved back in October uh, that basically extends from Haroun Road and serves the new development of about five lots that will all front Brent Road. Um, there was some additional work, there was some uh, restoration work that we weren't sure if it was going to be done by the developer or the city. It was ultimately performed by the city's contractor. So that was an additional amount of $5,000. But the final quantities came in less than what the original bid was. So it results in a uh, uh, which brings the total contract to $35,790. Um, we'll be coming back to council one more time with this project. We'll get put together uh, these construction costs, our inspection costs, some sampling costs, and things of that nature. And uh, it'll, we'll have the total project costs as well as a cost recovery roster uh, for council to approve where the, those total project costs will be split among the five parcels that, along Brent Road there. So, but uh, we do recommend approval of this change order to move forward.
All right, you do have in your council packets, Proposed Ordinance 110-2020 to approve this change order, which is a final change order. Mr. McCann.
A question first to Mr. Aller. That in my short time on council, this has not come up before where we've done a change to reflect a different amount. And in your history, I'm sure this has come up in the past. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, yes, it's uh, it's pretty common to have at least one change order. Um, many times modifying the- just never seems to actually be constructive in that manner. So um, there's typically always at least one change order uh, on almost every single project.
And you feel comfortable with the change?
Yes, yeah, we reviewed, we review all of the numbers and the quantities and that sort of information before we bring it forward and for approval.
Great, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Ordinance Number 110-2020. All members of council having received copies in advance, I'll read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and director of finance to approve change order number one. Final to this city's agreement with Provo Construction for the 6302 through 6342 Brent Road Waterline Project, which reflects the final installed quantities as a project. Increasing the contract amount by $2,632. Appropriating funds, therefore waiving the second and third readings and declaring an emergency.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Ordinance Number 1- that indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, final passage.
I move final passage of Ordinance 110-2020 as an emergency measure.
Second.
Moved and seconded for final passage of Ordinance 110-2020 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and Ordinance 110-2020 is approved. Moving on to Agenda Item 8. This is a report from the service to begin a qualifications-based selection request for some road improvements. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, these uh, four streets, Delbrook Drive, Dornell Drive, Hollybrook Lane, and Marshall Road are all projects that are slated uh, for construction in uh, 2022 or 2023. Um, in order to get out in front of those dates, uh, we'd like to uh, get the engineering, the surveying and engineering done um, this year in 2021. We did include those costs in the capital improvement budget for this year. Um, Hollybrook and Marshall Road will be done in 2022. Um, and Marshall Road improvements are really in anticipation of the uh, interchange improvements that are coming in 2025. Uh, as part of that project, we anticipate an increase in traffic on Marshall Road uh, for traffic heading north and south uh, into and out of Michigan. And uh, so we're in, this project will improve Marshall Road to be able to handle that traffic. Um, and then Hollybrook Lane is um, connected uh, to Marshall Road on, I'll indicate. And we think that's a good project to- together as one project. Um, as I indicated, we did uh, anticipate these costs and they are in our 2021 uh, budget. We're asking for permission now, even though we won't actually make the advertisement in '21. But because of timing of that January 4th meeting, um, we wanted to, we wanted to be, get the approval now so that uh, we can basically have this in the paper a day or two after the January 4th meeting. Um, so that's why we're coming to you now rather than waiting until January 4th. Um, we do have to- project will be more than $50,000 in services. And uh, the Ohio law uh, requires anything in excess of $50,000 uh, to be based on qualifications-based selection rather than just uh, negotiating um, a uh, cost with a, with a consultant. So uh, we are asking for permission to advertise uh, for engineering services.
And once you receive your results and have a recommendation, you'll bring it back to city council before hiring that firm?
Correct.
Mr. Frye, we just need a motion to advertise for QBS solicitation for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that the administration be authorized to uh, go for solicitation on qualification-based selection for the Delbrook, Delbrook Drive, Dornell Drive, Hollybrook Lane, and Marshall Road Improvement Project.
Second.
The move and seconded to authorize the clerk to advertise for responses on this QBS selection for this project. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the solicitation advertisement is authorized. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, sewer rates. Yes, we're back with a sewer rate increase due to a recalculation of Lucas County on the percentage of the debt that the city of Sylvania is under obligation to pay for.
Mayor, you froze. Did you turn it over to me?
I did.
You froze on my screen, so I wasn't, I wasn't absolutely sure. Um, yes, uh, the Lucas County wastewater resource, uh, Resource Recovery Facility, uh, that's much harder to say than wastewater treatment plant. I don't know why they changed the name, but um-
Easier, right?
Yeah. Um, the uh, that plant, as well as the trunk sewer that leads into the plant, uh, will have, by the end of 2022, will have undergone dollars in improvements uh, within a four-year time span. Um, some of those projects, some of those projects have already started to us- is paying. And then they invoice the communities for- some of those projects, the distribution for them had been calculated incorrectly. Um, the county staff had used a project from 2015 that was based on increased capacity. And in that instance, Sylvania was 13.3% of the increased capacity. The projects that were recently done should have been distributed based on the total capacity of the plant. And in that instance, Sylvania is 24% of the total capacity of the plant. We have 5.4 million gallons of a 22.5 million gallon per day plant. So in that sense, we had been under billed for uh, two years. The county uh, realized this um, uh, and came to the communities in October after, unfortunately, a month after we had come to you for rate increases. The difference in two, in this year is $155,000. And then it kind of reduces uh, each year until by 2024, it's an additional $20,000 per year on a, on a continuous basis. Um, the rates that we had put together earlier were basic, were uh, extremely uh, tight. We had them just covering the expenses as we knew them at that point. And when this was brought to our, um, we did, we would recommend increase the rates a little- increase that we would need in, in order to be able to- be one cents per thousand. That would take- Now, if you include this amount, th- this 31 cents would increase the average homeowner's bill in, in Sylvania by a dollar 70 per month. Um, the increase that we did in September uh, increased the sewer rate by $3.58 per month. So that brings the, the difference between January 1 of 2020 and January 1 of 2021 would be $5.28 per month on the sanitary sewer rate. We decreased the water rate uh, in September and that amounted to a dollar 81 per month decrease in the average rate. So our net, the two increases on the sanitary sewer side and the water rate decrease would be a net increase of $3.47 per month um, for the average residential customer in Sylvania.
Another year, Mr. Aller, if you can. We actually reduced water rates a lot more than that a year ago.
Yeah, yeah, we had a pretty large increase. Actually, uh, as a net, uh, were reduced um, uh, because of those large water rate decreases. So, um, this, it is an unfortunate circumstance. I have checked, I have gotten the amortization schedules um, on the, these debt payments from OWDA. Uh, and the 24% is, is the correct amount. Uh, the 13.3 is um, uh, is not accurate for these projects. And uh, we're, I'm comfortable that these are accurate dollar figures for what our share should be. So I do recommend approval of the increase. Um, this is something, if, if there'd like to be discussion, this isn't anything that needs to happen immediately. Um, uh, but-
There are changes that, while we may not like them, uh, I, we, this is, the costs are the costs. And um, we have to deal with that. So I'm comfortable moving forward with these.
Evan, if we're not increasing the rates, we're still pill, we're still paying the amount that we're billed, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, we'll be responsible for that increased amount.
Yes, thank you.
Evan, the um, the 155 ramping down to 20, is that just catch-up from the two years where they goofed up the calculation?
Yeah, basically, they had, uh, there were, there were two projects that were billed in there for two years. So they're going to catch those up in over a two-year period. And then there were two other projects that were uh, incorrectly billed over a three-year period. And so they're going to build those, the increased amounts over a three-year period. Um, but that's, we're paying our increased amounts plus catch-up from the earlier error, yeah.
Got it. We do have Ordinance 111-2020 prepared. If you're comfortable proceeding with these, your other option would be to refer it to the um, Utilities Committee. But it's accurate, these costs are negotiated as well as we can do them. And they're, we're going to pay them whether we put them in our rate.
I'd like to move forward, Mr. Mayor.
Now, Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce 111-2020. All members of council having received copies in advance, I'll read by title only. Amending Chapter 925 of the Sylvania Codified Ordinances by amending Section 925-05, sewer charges levy to increase the sewer charges- and third reading and declaring an emergency.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that Ordinance Number 111-2020 will be read by title only and the second and third readings be waived. All in favor of that indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, final passage.
I move final passage of Ordinance 111-2020 as an emergency measure.
Second.
Moved and seconded for final passage- opposed? Motion carries and Ordinance 111-2020 is approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 12. You have in your council packets, Ordinance 112-2020. This is to approve an updated contract for Toledo Lucas County Health District. Um, this is, it had, it'd be the third, I believe, generation of this and it's new contract rather than old one. This is-
Leslie appears to be frozen from my screen.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, there we go.
Okay.
I'm back. Sorry. Um, yes, as the mayor said, this is just a one-year extension. We previously approved um, a reallocation of the cost. And I, it appears that they just need an additional year with all of the activity at the health department this year. They'd need additional year to get the consolidation finalized.
No further questions? Do you have Ordinance 112? You've got the static that's coming on the line, I'm not sure where that's coming from. And you read this one?
I certainly can, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Ordinance Number 112-2020. All members of council having received copies in advance, I'll read by title only. Authorizing the mayor and to enter into an amended agreement with the chairman of the Lucas County General Health District Advisory Council for a contract providing for the administration of health and environmental affairs in the regional combined health district, waiving the second, third readings and declaring an emergency.
Second. And it's been moved and seconded that Ordinance Number 112-2020 will be read by title only. Second, if your readings wave, all in favor of that indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move final passage of Ordinance Number 112-2020.
Second. Moved and seconded for final passage of Ordinance 112-2020 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Toby, can you mute?
I think-
Yep, he is. Unfortunately, he's speaking shortly.
Thanks, Toby.
In the vacuum cleaner, Toby, that's what it sounds like. 2020, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and Ordinance 112-2020 is approved. Going to the second page of our agenda, we're up to Agenda Item 11. This is amendments to the account allocations. This is a regular thing to do at the end of each year. It's broken into two ordinances this year. It's broken into two ordinances this year. And Mr. Schreier, turn your microphone back on and we'll see how you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm actually in my office, but the heat is, the heat is running. Can you hear me though?
Yes, we can.
We can hear you now.
Okay. Ordinance 113 2020, this is, like the mayor said, something we do at the end of each This year, there was a lot fewer adjustments that we needed to make versus previous years. A lot of that was because we spent a lot less during COVID and everything that was going on. And in three of our minor, smaller special revenue funds, two in the municipal court small dollar amounts, nothing significant. And then the major increase in the general fund was the ordinance number 114 2020, which is $5 million and that was to accomplish the transfer of funds back into the capital improvement fund. Other than that, other than increasing our general fund budget for that transfer, we stayed within the original past budget. And again, and the general fund and the capital improvement fund in all the funds other than those three smaller special revenue funds that I talked about earlier. We did some, some of the funds, we had to increase on the revenue side, which as I explained in my email is a positive thing. We received more revenue than we had budgeted. So that's what Exhibit B accomplishes. So it's administration's recommendation to pass these two ordinances.
Let's talk a little bit. This, which is a fund transfer from the general fund back into the capital improvements fund. exception taken a number of distribute income tax dollars coming into the city by a basic formula, some into the general fund, some into capital improvements. And the state auditors that came in, what about five years ago, Toby? Something like that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Decided that every other auditor that had reviewed our books was in error and they were smarter and said we couldn't do that. It led to some heated meetings right here in the mayor's office. I know Mr. Hanum was present for one of those. And we, we've tried to contest that, we're not getting anywhere. And we would like to clean that up in our auditor's report of the 2020 books. It was a surprise to me when Toby came to me and said that he was ready to transfer those dollars, that we had sufficient funds to transfer back into capital without causing a cash flow issue. And I think perhaps Toby, you should give some assurance that by taking these dollars out of the general fund, putting them back into the capital fund as requested or directed by the state auditor does not create an issue for us.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We typically want to have a balance about three, between three and a half and $4 million in our general operating fund at all times. It is, it's, it's just over 2 million right now after this transfer, but by the end of the year, we'll be able to transfer a significant amount from the income tax fund into the general fund. I expect us to have close to 3 million at the end of December of this year. And then by the end of January, we should be right back up to the 4 million that we're, we need to be at.
Every city that pays workers' compensation in the state of Ohio is getting a sizable rebate. What is that for the city of Slovenia that's anticipated?
We're expecting to receive about $400,000 and it's supposed to come by the end of this year. Maybe there's a possibility that we don't get it to, you know, the beginning of January, but the dollar amount set, it's right, probably about 400,000.
the auditors?
I'm sorry, Doug, you kind of broke up there, so I didn't get it.
Okay. So is the sole reason that we are doing this transfer is to accommodate the auditor's misinterpretation of what it's created for and it's our flexibility as an operating city?
If I might, this transfer already happened. My understanding is from email that Mr. Schreier sent is that the transfer's already been made. And this is follow-up. I, I requested the administration to split these two because the one is pre, previewing something that we have the opportunity to approve rather than approving something that has already occurred. So while I share your concern about the flexibility and, and the auditor's office, I have concerns fundamentally about the fact that the transfer was approved. And I know that, that, that the administration believes that they had the authority to do that, and that's one of the things I would like to, to look at in the new year, early in the new year, to bring a, a review again of the debt policy forward because I think there's just a fundamental disagreement on whether that authority needed, needed to be before or after the transfer which occurred.
Mr. Schreier, had we not been making deposits out of the general fund back into the capital improvement fund on a yearly basis, just on a much smaller scale?
We have, but they, they have been in the original budgets that were passed for the, that, those years.
Understood. And what was in the budget for this year?
Um, I believe it was one point, either 1.8 million or 1.7 million. I can't remember very often.
Well, I, I renew my question, which is why we are so concerned about our auditor's mistaken comment. I've, I've certainly been re-elected since this comment came along and so, and I have Well, Toby, you want to, you want to address that or not?
Again, you're, you're breaking up for me, so I didn't catch what you said.
I am not, I will state unequivocally, I'm not concerned about these auditor's comments. They're wrong, they're misguided. Leslie did, Leslie prepared an outstanding request. And I hate, I hate giving up our flex, our, our expenditure flexibility this way. I, I just don't see it, I don't see a need to do this.
I do think that both Mr. Frye and Mr. Hanum bring up valid points. I do think that from what I understand, the transfer's already occurred, so I'm not sure there's any opportunity for council to make an alternate decision, but I think these types of transfers for the future would be helpful. I do think that it is, it is confusing that it wasn't part of the budget in full as it has been in the past.
Why was, why was this an authorized expenditure? I don't, I mean, you need this vote for this to be an authorized transfer, don't you?
Toby, could you hear the question?
Okay, so the, as I understand it, the transfer is approved in ordinance 114 2020. Anybody who can hear me, what happens if we don't approve authorized ordinance or proposed ordinance 114 2020? The law director of the mayor could answer that, that'd be great. If not?
Toby, you are breaking up or you're frozen. Can you come over, come over to the mayor's office and, or go to the law director's office so you can answer the question?
Okay, because that, yeah, everything's breaking up for me. I'll be right over there.
We'll see if we can get the answer, Mr. Hanum. I might say it's really convenient to have people freeze up at the vital moments like that, that's.
I, I, I understand perfectly. It seems to happen to me in every important meeting whenever I'm talking, so.
Is that a hit?
It is probably, it may, it may be the grace of God intervening on my behalf.
Okay, I think Toby's going into the law director's office.
What was the question? Yeah. Yeah. Yep. Sorry about that. I, you guys were breaking up and then I got kicked off. What is the question?
Go back to 114.
The question is, it, I'm, it's not clear to me why this transfer wasn't pre-approved by council and now we have ordinance 114 2020 in front of us, retroactively approving it. What happens if we don't approve that?
We would transfer the money back.
Which would be a clear violation of what we were told by the auditor five years ago.
No, it would be more just an error in doing the transfer originally.
Why are we so concerned about this auditor's comment?
I, I don't know how to answer that, Doug.
I mean, I'm a lawyer, so, you know, I, I mean, I, I deal with issues like, I deal with these conflict issues all the time. Leslie put together, Leslie stated very clearly why the auditor was wrong in her, in the submission to the attorney general. And we haven't gotten an answer to that. The attorney general, the auditor who made that comment is now the attorney general. If he wants to address that, I'd be, you know, I, I'd rather do that. I, I hate, I really don't like giving up the flexibility that the, that the, the capital fund language was very clearly, very clearly allowed us to do what we did. And anyone who's read Leslie's submission to the attorney general made that very clear. The auditor, the auditor, and I was in, the mayor makes a reference to that meeting that I was in, the auditor was very unresponsive to me when I, when I challenged him on the language. At least I viewed him as unresponsive. And I think this, this interpretation severely limits the flexibility of council to address their financial, the financial needs of the city and requires us to make, uh, requires us to put money in places and limit it in ways that it was never intended to be limited. And I, and I think that's, I think it's a mistake to give into it. I, I, and the other point I made, Toby, is that I have run for election at least twice since this auditor's comment came up. And managed to survive, our community is not outraged by this. And I would be, and I, I hate giving this position up this way. So, you know, just for the purpose of eliminating a comment on an audit, seems to me to be an unreasonable, it seems not to be a sufficient reason to limit our flexibility the way it does.
The meeting you sat in on is famous here in City Hall because people outside of the mayor's office could hear you and me all around the building. We were quite, and I was even more upset when the actual audit came up and accused me personally of unlawful acts. I was criminal by the auditor of the state of Ohio. And that's why I'm interested in setting this straight because I have been accused of an unlawful act. Now, you might be right, I shouldn't give into that. I should say, no, it wasn't an unlawful act. But I feel like we already have. We have changed the allocation of the income tax coming into the city in response to it. And we've been making transfers back into that fund annually to correct it. So I think the point about whether we are giving up the right or not is pretty much already spoken for. Yes, I'm more sensitive about the unlawful act in writing that I've been carrying around for the last four or five years. But you're right, it hasn't affected me or the city in any way. We haven't tried to sell any debt and I'm not sure it would make any difference if we did try to sell that.
Actually, I think the way it's structured makes it stronger.
I have no problem with putting the funds back to retract what Mr. Schreier did and continue on paying it down on a smaller amount. But given the fact, the assurance from him that we're not limiting our options any more than we've already done in the past by changing the allocation, I didn't see a problem with this. But I am not opposed to taking it and putting it back in the general fund either.
I've, I've talked a lot about this. I'd be much more interested in hearing what other.
You know, I'm just curious. I know this is about the 2020 allocation, so we maybe do have to make this decision tonight, but that would be my key question. Is there any way that this can be a decision that is referred to finance for additional consideration rather than trying to make some, some quick decision here tonight? Or because of the 2020 year end, are we required to make this decision by the end of this meeting?
I think you need to make it by the end of this meeting for it to be reflected in the 2020 books, but you can reject this ordinance. We go back to the 1.7 million dollar transfer and it'll just show up as a note in the 2020 audit. There seems to be no problem with having that in the books. I can't fault Mr. Schreier for trying to clean up our audits, but it hasn't really made any difference. And until we need to sell debt, I don't think it will. And I'm not in prison yet.
Mr. Schreier, if we were to accept this transfer tonight and if in the future, the attorney general does take a look at our appeal and he were to make a change of outcome, could we then transfer this back so that we would have the flexibility of these funds?
If, I think, I, I didn't catch all your question, but if you're, if you're asking, if you approve the ordinance tonight, then can we change our mind next year and transfer the money back?
No, I mean, if the attorney general were to change, change the outcome. I, I'm sorry, this happened before I got in council, so I'm trying, I guess I'm trying to count, maybe I'm.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't know what the answer to that is if, if they actually decide that we were right all along, if we could, what, what they would allow us to do at that point. I'm not sure.
Toby, for what it's worth, I don't know the answer to that question either.
All I know is that the state auditor who is representative chose to do that was non-responsive to me and more importantly, to Mr. Hanum and others that we tried to get to him through. As attorney generals, he's not going to change his mind. And as Mr. Frye said earlier, if we need that money and want to take it out of there again without his permission, we're guilty again of doing the same thing they accused us of the first time. So there is more flexibility. So there is more flexibility not to transfer the money into capital. But to leave it alone and slowly pay this off comfortably over the years has, which has been the plan. We just seem to have the funds necessary to do it this year, that's all.
Yeah, they're, the, I don't think we're, we're looking all the way at the general fund. We're still going to have the, the appropriate general fund balance within the next month. So we're not really losing any flexibility in the general fund. We're actually gaining flexibility in the capital improvement fund, um, because that balance is so high now. But we're not losing the flexibility, except for one month maybe, flexibility in that general fund.
Toby, I, I agree with you all, but only to the extent that back in the, when we had the finance committee meeting, Mr. Hanam and I both asked about the potential of eliminating whether we could pay off some of the debt, which would be about $1.3 million, and you gave us a response on that. And that's, if, if we withdrew that money and paid that off now, that would, my understanding from our, uh, conversations and emails, that would come out of the general fund balance, correct?
It would be funds that would not be going into the general fund balance, yeah, we wouldn't actually take funds out of there, just less funds would be going into there.
So the, the, the effect would be the same, we would lose $1.3 million in 2021 that would otherwise go into the general fund balance, correct?
Yes, and it would take, it would take the four years to basically even that out, to get the money back in there.
Well, Toby, I don't want to sound, I don't want to, I, I'm sounding too critical. This is clearly a first world problem. I mean, we're, uh, we're blessed to have, uh, the financial resources that we do have, and I, and I appreciate, and I know how hard you work on this, uh, on these budgeting issues and so forth. And where we're, where we're presently, I mean, the fact that we're even able to, there are so few cities that could have this discussion, I am, you know, and you're, uh, you're to be credited that, uh, we can have this. You know, if, um, I guess the bottom line here is, if, if you're comfortable that we've got the cash on hand that we need and the funds on hand, I mean, I, we'll go forward and put this, put this to bed. I would just, uh, in the future, I, I would prefer to talk them, talk with council about this before we make a move like that.
I cer, I certainly will commit to that, yes.
And, you know, I appreciate the discussion as well, I think, uh, we likely should move forward. I think the looming question in council members' minds is what other choices could have been made uh, with, in light of things that we're looking at for the future. But for now, that decision kind of has moved forward, and I feel comfortable to advance the legislation.
All right, well, let's move on with the easier one first, which is ordinance 113 2020. Uh, this is just those minor adjustments to some of the funds, Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce ordinance number 113-2020. All members of council having received copies in advance, I will read by title only to make certain adjustments to account allocations within the fund appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020, waiving the second and third readings and declaring an emergency.
And moved and seconded that ordinance number 113 2020 be read by title only and the second and third readings be waived. All in favor of that indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move final passage of ordinance number 113-2020.
And moved and seconded for final passage of ordinance 113 2020 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance 113 2020 is approved. Moving on to proposed ordinance 114 2020, Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number 114-2020. All members of council having received copies in advance, I'll read by title only to make certain adjustments to account allocations within the general and capital improvement fund appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020, waiving the second and third readings and declaring an emergency.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that ordinance number 114 2020 be read by title only and the second and third readings be waived. All in favor of that indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Final passage.
I move final passage of ordinance number 114-2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded for final passage of ordinance 114 2020 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the ordinance 114 2020 is approved. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Schreier. Now you can let the law director back into the meeting. We'll move on to agenda item 12.
Well, the view got better.
Gold star for Mr. Hanam. He's from the law director, from the law director's lackey, I might add, I. Okay. Agenda item 12 is notice of a transfer of a D5 liquor permit. The permit is not moving its address, it's over next to the Kroger store on Savania Avenue, but it is changing ownership from one name to another. Chief Snorr, do you have any comments about this transfer?
Um, Mayor, I've had a, the opportunity to review the packet from the, from Liquor Control, and we've done our local checks. And at this point, I don't see any, uh, anything in the, uh, the packet that, uh, would cause me to, uh, uh, request, uh, a hearing on this matter.
Uh, Chief Snorr, is this a new business or is it the same thing?
Uh, it looks like, according to the packet, the only information I have, um, is, it looks like there's going to be a, an internal name change and, and maybe the shuffling around of some officers in the corporation. But the physical location and type of business should be the same.
The business name on the application is changing from Smokehouse Bistro to Jett's.
Correct.
There have been a lot of places in and, or a lot of companies in and out of those restaurants over there.
Yes.
It's, it, it has a Jett's title now on the building, doesn't it?
Yep. It does, it does. Again, I think it's some, uh, a couple of the officers, uh, cuz I, I have new officer sheets, um, for three individuals for this, uh, proposed, uh, permit transfer.
I may have to check out the new establishment.
Can you do that over Zoom, or are you gonna have to do it in person, Mr. Hanam?
I would have to do that in person, yeah, that, that would be problematic.
Okay. Um, your choice tonight is whether or not to request a local hearing. Mrs. Westfall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I move that no hearing be requested for the notice of transfer of D5 and D6 permits for property located at 7625 and 7627 Savania Avenue, Savania, Ohio, Doing Business, I'm sorry, uh, from Vardy and LLC Doing Businesses, Smokehouse Bistro to MPN Group LLC Doing Businesses.
It has been moved and seconded not to request a local hearing on this liquor transfer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the clerk can respond accordingly. The next five agenda items are to appoint people to certain city boards. Uh, the first four are council appointments, the first two of those are reappointments, I believe, to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Mr. Richardson, want to comment on these or take action?
Yeah, I was planning on taking action on just a quick, you know, history. We, we talked to these people, uh, recently with our committee and approved them, and, and as the policy goes, that, um, they would be reappointed, uh, after their first term, um, and that's what's happening now. So they, they've all been, uh, interviewed by the committee recently, at least in my term on council, and are in their first term in their committees. So if there is, uh, if there's no questions, I can go ahead with them, does anybody have any comments or questions? And I've personally spoken with them all, and they're all very interested in continuing on as well. So, that being said, I will start with resolution 26, yes, resolution number 26 2020. All members of council having previously received copies, I will read by title only. Uh, reappointing Stephen Risher to the zoning board of appeals for a term expiring December 31st, 2023, waiving the second and third readings and declaring an emergency.
Second.
And moved and seconded the resolution number 26 2020 be read by title only and the second and third readings be waived. All in favor of that indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, final passage.
I move final passage of resolution number 26 2020.
Second.
And moved and seconded for final passage of resolution 26 2020 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and resolution 26 2020 is approved. Let me speak a minute just about Mr. Risher, he's a retired firefighter, but he is also a former Sylvania High School marching band percussion squad member, friend of mine, he's a year older than I am, but it's good to see people his age participating in city government, so thank you for reappointing him. Mr. Richardson, would you like to have somebody else read the next one, or you want to proceed with it?
I can proceed with it, that's fine.
Okay, 27 2020.
All right, I will now introduce resolution number, uh, 27 2020. All members of council having previously received copies, I will read by title only. Reappointing Danny Royer to the zoning board of appeals for a term expiring December 31st, 2023, waiving the second and third readings and declaring an emergency.
And moved and seconded the resolution number 27 2020 be read by title only and the second and third readings be waived. All in favor of that indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, final passage.
I move final passage of resolution number 27 2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded for final passage of resolution 27 2020 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and resolution 27 2020 is approved, and Mr. Royer is reappointed to the zoning board. The next two are for appointments to the Savania Area Joint Recreation District Board. Mr. Richardson, any comments?
Does anybody have any questions? Nope.
You're welcome to read these, or I can go on to other members of your committee, whatever your choice is.
Yeah, you know what, spread the love, how about somebody else can do 28?
Okay, I actually have Mrs. Capellini down for this one, since she serves on that board as well.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce resolution number 28-2020. All members of council having previously received copies, I'll read by title only. Reappointing Brian Keizer to the Board of Trustees of Savania Area Joint Recreation District Sageard for a term expiring December 31st, 2023, waiving a second and third reading and declaring an emergency.
Second.
And moved and seconded the resolution number 28 2020 be read by title only and the second and third readings be waived. All in favor of that indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, final passage.
Thank you, I'd like to move final passage of resolution number 28-2020.
Second.
Moved and seconded for final passage of resolution 28 2020 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and resolution 28 2020 is approved, and Mr. Keizer is reappointed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, you know, as, as we go through these, um, I think, I, I would like to, uh, suggest that before our next meeting, we have, uh, Ms. Bryning, Ms. Bryning, uh, advises into how we should, what our language should be going forward be, uh, in conjunction with the new charter, um. This is all, I mean, we're, we've all adopted this, but now as I read the charter, we don't have to waive a second and third reading. We just have to do a, we just have to have five votes. So, um.
I can tell you, when I took office, the current law director, Kyle Dorcas, actually gave me a script, which I memorized and still use, how to do the two motions. I don't think Mrs. Bryning has supplied me with that, but I do know the intent is that we will have one motion which will allow us to vote an ordinance up or down in one setting, and if there are five votes or more, it's done. If there's less, if there's only four votes, we have to back up and do it a couple more times. If there's less than four votes, if there's only three, it fails. Um, but we should get that script out to everybody, including me. It's gonna be very difficult, I'll have to learn a different, different procedure, I, I don't know if I can handle that.
I, I'm sure you can, and with, uh, with good legal guidance, we'll all be fine.
All right. Um, we do have one more of these resolutions to reappoint Mrs. Capellini, you should not read this one. Mr. Hanam, why don't you take this one, you're on that committee as well? This would be resolution 29 2020.
Trying to unmute myself. Okay, here we are. Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you, uh, I entered, I'd move to adopt resolution number 29-2020. All members of council having previously received copies, uh, read by, uh, title only. Reappointing Katie Capellini to the Board of Trustees of Savania Area Joint Recreation District Sageard, she being a member of the council of this appointing political subdivision uh, for the full calendar year of 2021, waiving the second and third readings and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Been moved and seconded the resolution number 29 2020 be read by title only and the second and third readings be waived. All in favor of that indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move final passage of resolution number 29-2020 as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for final passage of resolution 29 2020 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and resolution 29 2020 is approved, and congratulations, Mrs. Capellini. How long have you been on the Sageard board?
I think it's been 10 years.
You've had a lot of progress at Sageard over those 10 years.
Thank you for all your work.
Absolutely.
And you are now even more historically noticeable, because I believe that's the last time we'll go through that process of motions.
And I think it's wholly appropriate that our, uh, council member with the most years of experience was the person who read it into the record.
Thank you for bringing it up, Mr. Hanam, I would have missed that, so.
Yeah, well, I get to be, uh, I'm days away from being 66, and I'm just stunned.
Some of us are past 66, oh, I, I will not take offense. Um, I do have a confirmation that I'm asking for you. Um, you have a, a letter from me stating that Mr. Linsley, Tom Linsley, who has served on the Plan Commission for a couple of terms, announced to me three months ago that he did not wish to be reappointed. He served as chairman of the Plan Commission for several years and has done a terrific job, but I think was just ready to move on. He brought to me, at the same time, a candidate that, uh, we took a look at along with some other candidates that we had in mind. And the candidate he brought was very good, and Mr. Jeff Schaaf, who I have appointed and asked for you to confirm, Mr. Schaaf grew up a block or so away from downtown Sylvania. He continues to live in Sylvania, he is a realtor or a real estate agent, as Mr., uh, Linsley was, but it is also an employee of the Toledo Regional Chamber of Commerce in their business development group. Um, I think he's an excellent fit to come in there, and I recommend your confirmation of Mr. Schaaf.
Mr. Mayor, I move confirmation of, uh, appointment of Jeff Schaaf to the Savania Municipal Planning Commission.
Second.
And moved and seconded to approve the mayor's appointment. Been moved and seconded to approve the mayor's appointment of Jeff Schaaf to the municipal planning commission. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Um, we are up to agenda item 18. Um, I know that we still have Mr. Sanford at the meeting in council chambers. However, um, you should have all gotten an email from him setting a meeting with Michelle Johnson for January 6th, 2021 at 3:30. Bill, if you're still in council chambers, you want to wander over in front of the camp? There you go. Okay. And update us on the downtown plan, which was referred to in the public meeting a couple of times tonight. Didn't include way down to Savania Avenue, but it does have some good language in it that was quoted. Give us an update.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this will, and again, thank you all council members for responding. We've got the meeting set. Uh, this will be just for you, council members and the administration, before it would be released to the public. I thought that was important for us to go through it first. I will be sending in the next couple of days this to you for you to review and yet then you can have questions ready. And, and Michelle will go through like she did the previous meeting, um, going through the report and explaining it and then we'll have time for our questions. Um, it, and it also included in this will be a TIF analysis, how the TIF could, a TIF could work at our downtown. So I'll send that to you. It'll have an explanation. You can, and, and you can get back to me if you have questions beforehand and then we will be able to, to have a working meeting with, uh, Michelle on January 6th. After that meeting, that's when we would set a public meeting to involve the public.
Hey, Bill, I just want to verify when you were talking about, he's gonna talk about a TIF as a TIF, tax incremental financing?
That is correct.
Okay. I just wanted to verify. I thought that's what you said, but wasn't certain. Thank you.
When we were looking at different possible consultants for the downtown plan, that was one of the issues that, um, Michelle Johnson brought her experience with funding opportunities and grant programs. And so it's important that she follows through on this and we listen to what her recommendations are for grants and other funding mechanisms for the downtown. Um, Mrs. Westfall, we need a motion to set a committee of the whole for that time.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that we set the committee of the whole meeting for Wednesday, January 6th, 2021 at 3:30 PM. A quick question, will that be via Zoom?
Yes.
Via Zoom.
Yes.
And, um,
Mr. Sanford, any further comment about that?
Yes, it'll be a virtual meeting and I'm looking at Chuck here and we'll get it on the schedule form.
Second.
We did have a really successful Zoom meeting with her before, but many of us were present in city council chambers and I'm not sure that's a good move now. She was an excellent host for that previous meeting and had a mechanism for other people to vote on it. We won't necessarily need that since it's not a public meeting, but she's pretty good at her Zoom meeting, as Mrs. Westfall was tonight as well.
Right. I think that'll be, uh, important for when we do set and have that public meeting.
Okay. Uh, so the clerk will post that. Did we vote? We don't think we voted.
No, we didn't vote yet.
All in favor of setting that committee of the whole meeting indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the clerk is instructed to post that committee of the whole meeting for Wednesday, January the 6th at 3:30 PM. Moving on to agenda item 19, committee reports. We did add agenda item 19A to schedule a zoning committee to look at a couple of issues, zoning, outstanding zoning issues. Mr. Hanam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I've been reminded there, there are a couple, a couple of zoning issues that, um, uh, need our attention. One is, um, a change to accommodate, uh, a zoning requirement relating to, um, bike racks. Um, we had talked about that at either previous zoning, I, I believe at a previous zoning committee meeting or in council. Um, it has, uh, fallen off the radar. I, I take full responsibility for that. Uh, the other one is, uh, discussion about, uh, a zoning requirement, imposing a zoning requirement for first floor, uh, retail use in our, uh, in our immediate downtown, those first two blocks on Monroe in particular. Um, I'd like to discuss that and, uh, discuss the pros and cons of doing that. Um, it is that, that recommendation, I believe, was in our last, uh, master plan and, uh, has not received any action. Um, so as chair of zoning committee, I guess that's my fault too. So you blame me. These are things that I think we ought to at least get together and discuss. Uh, so I would propose that we, uh, do that early in the new year. And I don't think, I, I think our council continues. We're not, we don't have anybody new coming on. So I think that's appropriate to schedule something early in the new year. And, um, what I'm wondering is our first meeting is, uh, Monday, January 4th. Um, could we meet at, uh, could we do a zoning committee meeting at 6:30 on, on that day and, uh, at least begin the discussion on that? Would that, if that was, if calendars allow that, that, that would be my proposal.
Point of clarification, um, Katie, Lindsay, Doug and myself are on that committee.
It's good for me.
Works for me. Lindsay?
Works for me.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, uh, ask the clerk to, uh, advertise for a zoning, an annexation committee meeting on Monday, January 4th at 6:30, uh, to address, uh, bike racks and a requirement for first floor retail in the first two blocks of the, uh, the Main Street, uh, neighborhoods north of Monroe Street. And that second part, it's important to share that with our downtown, uh, business folks, cause I'd be very interested in their comments on that because obviously that impacts, um, their, their ownership and, uh, operational rights. And I'd be very interested in knowing how our current, uh, business owners feel about that.
And obviously there are some existing homes, I, owner occupied homes there that would be grandfathered in, I'm sure.
Right. We do have grandfathering. It would be, it would be, uh, it would be a change going forward. Uh, we, we, it wouldn't require anybody to change their current use, but it would mean that in the event that there were a change going forward, uh, it would impact that. And that would be a, uh, you know, potentially significant economic consideration.
Doug, this is Mark. I'm, I'm happy to share that with DSA, um, to get their feedback. I guess my question for you on it is, do you have, you had mentioned that was in the prior, um, study? Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I think I've got a copy of that. I'll dig that out and, and, cause I just want to make sure I'm, I'm getting it in the proper context. So DSA has, you know, has good information.
And I'm not, um, I, I assume Katie might have that readily available.
It was in our last market study, um, which I think that, um, our current master plan people used. So it's still valid and I, I could email it to everybody. I'm pretty sure I still haven't. I think I have emailed it to all of you before.
You have.
I think you have too. But if you could, if it were one more time, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. I will.
Thank you.
Has Michelle Johnson proposed any townhouses in those two blocks that would not have retail on the first floor? I know she has on Monroe Street.
I don't think on Main Street.
Okay.
I thought she had.
On Main Street?
They were there to start with and then when the plan was revised, she took them out.
Okay.
On Main Street.
All right. Very good. Well, we'll have the clerk post that meeting as well. Um, any other committee reports or scheduling to be done at this time or committee referrals? Hearing onward toward, we're at the end of our agenda. Um, Mrs. Booker has included in the information section, the election results concerning our charter changes and you can see that they both passed more than two to one. Um, one must have been more confusing than the other, or it got harder to vote yes on the second one because that one was not quite the same proportion, but still passed more than two to one. Um, I think that's it. Is, there's no further business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
My second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries and we stand adjourned until our next meeting in the new year, two weeks from tonight on Monday, January the 4th at 7:30 PM. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you. Nor, in a normal year, we would have been meeting at the historic village for our reception and perhaps Mrs. Westfall would have hosted a reception after the meeting. Um, we cannot do this year, but thank you all for your work through the year to benefit the city of Savania and best wishes for a happy holiday season.